Please, to order, please ask for the legislative. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam President, please talk.
Trustee Burns here. Trustee Carter. Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
All right, the approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceeding for the board meeting held on September tenth, twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Burns. Any questions? Madam President.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Carter. Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll ask for approval of proceedings for the committee of the holding that was held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam President, please talk.
Trustee Carter. Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings of the board meeting that was held on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam President.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Motion carried. Public comment. All question and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the South Village in Salt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or both. I will answer all questions after all public comments have been put. Please state your name when you come up to the mic. Is that mic on? Yeah.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, okay?
Yes.
David Fields. Mr. Mayor, I want to address a comment that was made last week by trustee Coleman. I feel that every lady in here should have been appalled by the statement that he made because it was sexist and male chauvinistic. He said that, and I'm going to take it because I said, he had to be talking about the ladies because he couldn't be talking about the men. He said that your mate should not be here in this retinue or sitting up there as a lady. You should be at home, pregnant and barefooted in the kitchen. That's what it came out to. That's what it came out to. It, read between the lines, people. Read between the lines. The statement that he made was a sexual, chauvinistic statement to ladies, to every lady in here. Because he said, "You should not be here. You should be at home, making a home at your house." That's where his wife is at. That's his words. And if you didn't get offended by that, ladies, it's something wrong with you. A matter of fact, I know two of them didn't get offended because trustee Burns and trustee Williams applauded his statement. So I think there was something wrong with that. How could a man sit up here in this day and age, sit up and say that a woman has no place in this world? Because that's what the statement was about. Come on, you all.
Y'all got crazy?
You know how to read between the lines about things that's being said? And that, that was offensive to every lady in here. And I even took an offense to it. Because I know it's a fact. Every woman in here should be an equal partner to every man. And if somebody's woman is not an equal partner to them, then that's on them. But to bring that statement in here and address the ladies in here, I was offended by it. And if you weren't offended by it, there's something wrong with you as a lady. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to treat that as a comment and we're going to move on. Item number five. Financial matters. I'll accept, I'll accept a motion to approve the transfers and payable account payable distribution in the combined amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. And also I'd like to find that department to be maintained.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amend the motion to deduct ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars from line item number one, zero, 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 five, seven, two, six, zero, zero, zero. Invoices twenty-one sixty-seven through twenty-two forty and to strike the original amount and to insert the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. Also, also, I also would like to deduct from line item one, zero, 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 one, five, seven, two, six, zero, 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 in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred, forty dollars and fifty cents. Invoice number one, three, one, seven, three, and to strike the original amount. And also to deduct from line item number one, zero, 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 two, five, seven, two, six, zero, zero, zero. Invoices one, three, one, seven, three, dated nine, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of seventeen hundred, forty, forty dollars and fifty cents.
That it?
Yes.
Okay, um. I wasn't clear with the three eighty-three. Is that what you're taking away? Or is that what is left over after you make your deduction?
After the first deduction of ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, that would leave you that amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. Then we add to that.
Hold on just a second. If you take ninety-nine thousand from six thirty-nine, you come up with three eighty-three?
No, no, no. If you, it's from accounts payable.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm deducting only from accounts payable. And the accounts payable original amount is four hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and eighty-five cents. When you deduct the ninety-nine thousand, one forty, it comes out to be, as I stated earlier, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, um, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. Leaving a grand total, but not quite a grand total because we haven't deducted the other two line items.
Okay. And the other two, one for seventeen hundred and forty, and then there was another one for how much?
For seventeen hundred, forty dollars and fifty cents.
That's one. And then there's another?
There's two.
Oh, both of them are seventeen forty?
Yes.
Okay, that's invoice number one, three, one, seven, three.
Yes.
Those being, that's echo clean, make this. One for public grounds and then one for the police department. And the grand total for the amount is how much? From the six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six eighty-seven. Do you have that?
Apologies, these amounts were just given to me. The last two amounts were just given to me, so. Bear with me one minute. Grand total of five hundred, thirty-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Five, three, seven, oh, one, six?
I repeat.
Forty-four.
Five hundred, thirty-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Um, that's the motion on the floor.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a question about what I'm looking at here on the accounts payable. Minuteman, uh, Minuteman Press for Music Fest two thousand twenty-two. What was that? For parks and playgrounds?
I have no idea.
I, I don't.
What page is that on?
This is on page five. Uh, towards the, I think it's sector, third or fourth, from the bottom of the page.
Oh.
Something about.
Music Fest from twenty twenty-two.
I would like to remove that until we get further information about what this is.
Oh.
I don't know what this is.
Chief Barrett, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, so that came from, uh, the last music fest that we had. And the prepaid VA at the time did not submit an invoice. And Minuteman Press has been trying to get it taken care of through the village clerk. And they contacted me because that's who we use as well. So I resubmitted it again. And I think that we should pay them because we do not want to burn our bridges with our vendors. They've been out there since two thousand twenty-two, so.
Okay, and can you tell me what music fest that you're speaking of for twenty twenty-two?
So there were the banners and everything that they, that was ordered and the signs that went in the yard.
For what music fest? What music fest is this that you're speaking of?
The, the, the last one we had in twenty-two.
The only one I know in twenty-two was the ones that I did, and all of my vendors were paid.
No. So there were, there was a time where it was, the fest was canceled. And then we had, we ordered the banners and all of that stuff. And then you guys had to redo it again.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so was it the same for the parks and playgrounds? There's another, there's another six hundred, twelve dollars. And it just says parks and playgrounds. It doesn't specify, uh, specify what dealing with parks and playgrounds for six hundred and twelve dollars. Does anyone know what that is? And it doesn't have a department that is being billed. It just says parks and playgrounds.
That's if you add the two up together. You add two up together, it comes to six hundred and twelve dollars.
Okay, so it has the dollar, they, they have the dollar numbers.
If you add the four forty-two
and the one seventy, it comes to six hundred and twelve. So that's not a separate line, that's just a reference.
Okay, so they have, yes, it looks like a separate line.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Williams.
So Chief Barrett, you said you just recently got this invoice?
Yeah, so, well. So they originally sent it to the village clerk. And then the village clerk CC'd me on it. Um, and then I submitted it to, uh, to the finance team so that it could get taken care of because of the extensiveness. So there, I'm being transparent, there was a lot of invoices that got, uh, that was not done during his transition. So most companies are just now reaching back out to us. And then we're just trying to take care of the business that was done.
Absolutely, so I hope somebody took the time to make sure that they were not paid back.
They were not. They were not paid. Nope, they were not.
Excuse me, another question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief Barrett, do we have invoices or any type of paperwork on this company that was submitted for payment?
Yes.
And where is that paperwork?
It was all turned in with the check request.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It was all turned in with the check request.
Uh, to the finance department?
The finance team. It was, it was properly done, the way that it always, every invoice that get done, check request with the invoice and submitted.
Okay, so again, the trustees do ask that we need invoices and we need to be able to examine these invoices and to verify, uh, the monies that we are being asked to approve. So we're asking our finance department for, uh, invoices. And again, you all want us to pay these bills. So when we request, I, I know it's funny to some people. But when you ask us to pay these bills, we are requesting invoices. And we are requested to examine invoices. A delay is not a denial. But the trustees will deny payment until invoices are viewed. So now you guys have to start understanding. We need to follow protocol. That is in our whole ordinance code. And we're asking for invoices when we're doing this thing. And in addition, um, if you are, if you are submitting invoices to the clerk.
That's not what I'm saying. She CC'd me. The company sent the clerk the email. And she CC'd me, uh, CC'd me on it because I do a lot of business with this company. And so I took care of the issue for a former employee that's not here anymore so that the name of South Village did not keep getting dragged through the mud. So we took care of the issue. That was, it was all done because I submitted the invoice to the VA at the time. And what happened to it, it didn't get turned in. So we take care of it now. I don't think the vendor needs to wait another two years before they get paid.
Uh, I don't think they need to wait another two years, but I do think the trustees do need to see invoices. So we're asking if you guys get invoices, please to see us on those invoices as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, I do have a question. Just a second, Madam President. Um, on the echo claim, is there a, you decided not to pay both invoices. So, um, what does it take to, to get them paid?
Copy of the contract that we've asked for several times since they've come to me.
Can you hear that?
A copy of the contract which we've asked for several times. We don't know what we're paying if we can't see the contract. And we have asked for it several times. As early as last week and the month before that, and the month before that. I don't know why it's being kept for the trustees.
Just want to know what's the reason, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I responded to the first question of Chief Barrett. But I have great concern. I, early Monday morning, because I didn't want to send it over the weekend, I asked again to please get an appointment to come in and see the invoices. I have received no response. Here it is Tuesday night. Now I'm in a position again to pay bills that I did not get a chance to review. This is unfair to the trustee.
Yes, we do have a.
Okay, but this is a counts payable motion, right?
No, this is a motion on the floor.
To amend.
To amend the.
Okay, well, then we know what I'm talking about, why we have to post your payment. These bills are the first question.
You know, we said that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to explain, uh, for transparency's sake, um, why Minuteman sent me the invoice and I forwarded. I communicate with Minuteman. If you think about your business cards and things along that line, I'm their point of contact. And after they had attempted to get paid numerous times, they reached out to someone that they have business with actually. So as soon as I got it, that's when I transferred it. I emailed it rather over to Stephen Barrett. So that's how I got involved in it. I was asked to help.
Uh, excuse, okay, thank you, Clark. Uh, so I haven't, you all saying that they've been trying to get paid for two years. How? Because they have never appeared.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, no, she just made it.
No, we have.
They never appeared on the accounts payable.
We still have a motion on the floor. Let's take care of that.
Okay.
Let's take care of the motion.
And, Mr. Mayor, the motion that requires a second at this point is simply a motion to amend.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
So the motion is on the floor, and that was made by trustee Coleman. And I don't know who's second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was moved by trustee Coleman, second by trustee Williams, to amend the accounts payable and to take off, uh, two items, three items really. And that would bring the total amount to accounts payable thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven thousand and sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. But the motion on the floor is to, uh, amend those three items that are there. Then I'll ask for another motion to pay the bill. So right now, there's a motion on the floor to amend the accounts payable.
And waiting second.
Man. It was moved by trustee, trustee Coleman, and second by trustee Williams. Madam President.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter? Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I'll ask for a motion to pay accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixteen dollars and forty-four cents.
So move.
I'm asking for a second. I'm sorry, well, okay. Okay, well, it was a motion usually a second when coming, okay, I'll ask one second.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Coleman. Any questions? Madam President.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Abstaining.
Trustee Burns?
Abstaining.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Carter? Excuse me. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sack? I did that, okay. I'm sorry.
Please do, please.
I have one absentee, two expats, and two losses. So it's a tie.
Three, yes, three, two.
Three, yes.
I thought you'd go with the majority. Motion carried. Okay, petitions, agreements, and action items. I'll ask for a motion to accept the zoning board's appeal plan commission recommendation to approve the school district's community consolidated district one sixty-eight petition for a special use permit to allow for an educational, education facility for secondary use in residential district at two hundred and twenty-fourth and Torres Avenue in South Village.
So move. Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, second by trustee Burns. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee.
Uh, yes, when we had this only board of appeals, uh, maybe only one resident had any issue at all with this particular action. And what he was most concerned was, um, how would that affect the residents' taxes? And we were told that we would have an answer for that tonight. Has anybody done the research on that to see how it would affect the residents? Just so we can put it out the record if this is going to be a situation.
Yes.
Well, listen, whoever wants to.
Uh, we're going to have the superintendent of schools to come and explain that now. It was explained at the meeting, but only one person attended, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I approach and bring just a.
Yes, Dr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Donna Simpson-Lee, and I'm superintendent of community, of the proud superintendent of community consolidated school district one sixty-eight. In answer to the question, our tax levy is set by accounting. We cannot exceed a five percent tax cap. So it will not impact the residents of South Village. And we actually had some monies that were set aside for other capital projects. So it doesn't even impact our budget at this point. And I want to thank, um, the board, the zoning ordinance appeal, um, zoning ordinance group, and my board president, Tammy Jones, our board member, Serena Dyer-Jones, and my CSBL, Leonard Moody. We've been working diligently, so we're really excited for this this evening, so. And there's some other questions that were here that we also are prepared to answer if you need them. We're really excited.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Okay. Any other questions? Madam President, please call him, go.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter? Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, um, next item is motion to approve the meals in the meantime pop-up food pantry for South Village at a time, at a time agreeable by South Village and the meals in meantime organization.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Coleman, second by trustee Burns. Any questions? Trustee Sack? It was explained last week, you were hearing? It may be, Madam President, Chief Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give a brief overview. Meals in the meantime is a program that provides food pantries to local communities. And their primary focus is on the Southland. They will come, volunteers, food, fresh produce and food in hand. And they will distribute the food to our residents and those who come by. And the tentative date already is set for February the fifteenth. It's not ongoing because they want to spread, um, the joy around to the other communities. So they are just, um, getting all of us scheduled at this point. So there is really little or no impact or no cost to us at all other than to make certain that we have like the emergency management who can help direct traffic. And then they would need to use the inside because it's going to be cold in February, unfortunately, where they put all of the food together so that people drive by, pick up the food items, and proceed for it. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter? Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our reports of officers. Mayor's report, um, at this particular time, I don't have anything to, uh, officially respond to. It's just that, um, it's getting, I keep saying it's reaching every week. But it's getting that time that we may. saying it's reaching every week, but it's getting that time that we may be again wearing masks in Villa Charlotte when we come in. COVID is, it, it, it's on the rise. They've seen it in different, uh, health organizations already in the hospitals. So, uh, as soon as we get the, um, I guess you can call it the okay from, um, downstate or from the state, um, we will begin acting like we did, um, I think it was two years ago. So that's all that I have. Um, village's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very brief this evening. In fact, I have one thing only that I would want to state as an appeal and also for notification. There are five Saturday, I mean, five Tuesdays in this month, and that means we will not meet on the twenty-ninth. And then the following Tuesday is November the fifth, and we do not have a meeting scheduled at that point in time either. So I would just like to appeal to the trustees and the department heads. If there's business that you need to be taken care of, you may want to present it next Tuesday at the committee meeting so that then we can follow up on the twenty-second and adopt or possibly adopt whatever the project is. But I just wanted to give you that update so that you would be ready. Mr. Mayor, that completes all that I would have to say and report at this time.
Okay, uh, village's administrator, Mr. Kenneth Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. In preparation for this board trustees meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide the audience with the following report. We had the opportunity to meet with ComEd this week. The meeting was essentially a kickoff on a detailed assessment and audit of all of the villages, villages' energy expenses with the focus to connect into programs funded by the state managed by ComEd. Connect us to programs that are going to save the village energy, energy dollars, excuse me, in a number of different areas over time. The assessment and ultimate report will cover a myriad of areas, including streetlights, interior buildings, interior building lights, energy caused by outbuildings, parking lots, and will also consider business and electric vehicle programs, which would include fleet management from our standpoint in terms of an application. Maintenance of EV vehicles for PD, FD, public works, and the public as well for recharging stations that will be funded totally by the state. South Village hosted just today a grant writing educational seminar sponsored by Build Up Cook. By all accounts, everyone enjoyed the session. It was highly informative in covering best practices in terms of approach, process, methodology when your municipality has a focus and emphasis on grant writing and systematically accessing all the available programs, and they taught all the various folks how to do that. We conducted a session recently with Robert and Andrew during the South Village water hydrant replacement initiative during that session. We identified as part of an overall plan to replace and or replace twenty-eight hydrants that are currently inoperable and replace outdated hydrants at various locations throughout the village that I think, uh, the total was approximately eighty-nine hydrants. This remediation work will begin at the earliest convenience in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, based on the weather, of course. The grant amount that will be used to fund the project is five hundred thousand dollars. South Village will be one of the municipalities participating in another Build Up Cook program, considering current repairs that I have mentioned previously to this group. We completed prioritizing the areas for this remediation work as it will begin as soon as possible. This initiative will also include activities to restore private property if affected by the repairs and remediation were possible. The county project will also include in scope incorporating ADA code accessibility standards and bringing the village up to code. In preparation for the work to begin, the village will distribute door hangers to affected residents in those specific areas. These hangers will inform residents about the project and emphasize the importance of removing shrubs or other, uh, objects that may impede or obstruct the work area. To ensure the project's progress, the village will remove any obstructions that remain after a reasonable period of time. The village scheduled a proposed twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget review summit meeting for this past Saturday that was open to the public, as many of you know, and the majority of the board trustees intentionally did not attend the meeting, wasting everybody's time for those significant, spent hours time preparing for the meeting. The village has recently begun a comprehensive review of approximately sixty-seven businesses that we have in town for compliance with various things, business licenses, liquor licenses, occupancy and reoccupancy permit, and other inspection requirements. We began writing citations for one particular business just last Friday that did not have a business license, liquor license, amusement license, nor a tax ID, which involves the state and the feds, of course. This business, in spite of our initial warnings and best efforts to provide them with a reasonable time to bring the business into compliance, opened for business in the next series of days after we provided them with an initial seventy-five dollar citation and warning. That business has been cited seven hundred and fifty dollars per day since last Saturday for each day that it operates without the proper licenses and inspections. We'll continue to go through this entire SV business list until we've addressed every single business to bring them into compliance. That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Burns?
Thank you, sir. So, uh, the twenty-eight, you have twenty-eight, uh, hydrants that's inoperable, uh, who, who would be doing these repairs, will come?
I'm just, I'm not here to answer questions. I'm here for my report, Alex. So if you want to have information like that for me, uh, I don't have that information in terms of who's going to be doing that information. I can't hear you for mediation.
Okay, uh, I do have another question. Uh, this, thank you. You said there's a five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar grant that will be facilitating these, uh, hydrant replacements, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what grant is that, sir?
It's the CDOG grant, five hundred thousand.
CDOG?
Also portion of it is funded by Build Up Cook. I provided that information in two reports ago.
Use the microphone, please. Can you hear me?
We're fine.
Are you okay, sir? Need water or something?
I'm wonderful.
Residents are trying to hear you, sir.
I'm wonderful.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, and also, uh, so you did mention that we have sixty-seven businesses in the village of South Village?
Yes.
And you are going through each business to, to make sure that they're in compliance as far as licensing, liquor license, and all, all of those things?
Yes.
So, um, I am very familiar with one particular business, uh, that was given a citation. And I just want to make sure I understand. The citation specifically stated that they had seven days to comply, but you stated that you were going to start finding, finding the businesses, seven hundred and fifty dollars a day until they comply. Then why did they have seven days to comply before?
That is not what I said. We gave them an initial citation and a warning of seventy-five dollars. Then we provided them with the seven-day grace period to bring the business into compliance with the proposition that they were not to open up for business. They decided to open up for business, and that's when we used the seven hundred and fifty dollars per day for every day they're going to be open.
And so as the Public Health and Safety Committee, um, I did review that citation, and that citation did not specify the business closing at all. The citation specifically said that they had seven days to.
No, we're talking about two entirely different things.
Well, I'm, I'm dealing with the business that I.
We're doing, talking about two entirely different things. I'm not going to argue with you about something that you don't understand.
I'm not arguing. I'm saying that I received a citation from that, a particular business here in the village. That business got a citation and said that, the citation specifically did not ask for them to close. It did not recommend closure at any point on the citation, and it specifically gave them seven days to comply.
The information that you don't have is that Cook County provided them with the citation in parallel to ours.
Okay, so did Cook County, uh, recommend that they close, sir?
Absolutely.
But we didn't.
Pardon?
The village did, you know, the village did not recommend.
Absolutely.
No, and that's what I'm explaining.
Hey, listen, you're not explaining to me. I was there personally.
Pardon, excuse me.
I was there, no, I was there personally. Don't tell me that I didn't go there and provide them. I don't care if you're a resident. It has nothing to do with this discussion.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
All right, we're done.
Excuse me, sir. I am a resident of this village, and I received from one of the businesses, a call, and the businesses explained to me what the citation was, and I got a copy of it. And I'm saying, according to the citation that was given by the village, they were not asked to close, not by this village.
That's ridiculous.
Well, I'm just telling you what the village wrote, and they did not recommend closure. So if it, if it's possible, may we have a copy of your report, sir?
My report?
Yes, may we have trustees have a copy of the report? They, uh, sir, your, your, your demeanor is very disturbing. Very disturbing.
Okay, um, police department chief Falcone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, madam clerk, village board, citizens of South Village. I have a very short report tonight. It's a calls for service report. From, uh, September twenty-fifth up until this afternoon, we responded to more than three hundred and ninety-one calls for service. Uh, during that same time, uh, officers made twelve arrests. Uh, that pretty much concludes my report for tonight.
Fire department chief Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, madam clerk, board of trustees. For a period of September twenty-fourth through tonight, the fire department responded to a hundred and nine calls for service. Uh, this upcoming week is fire prevention week, it's starting on Sunday, and it goes on through Saturday, October twelfth. This year's campaign is smoke alarms, make them work for you. And, uh, as we move throughout the week, we will be doing different activities at each of the schools of South Village, uh, one of which is a door decoration contest with the winning class receiving a pizza party. Also, uh, we have, uh, partnered with, uh, CAP IMV as well as the Illinois State Fire Marshal, uh, Service, and we will be doing a blitz, um, a statewide blitz from October twenty up through the twenty-sixth, and we will be installing, uh, smoked alarms at every residence home that needs it. Um, and it'll be for those four days. So if you need, um, a smoke detector in your home, please notify me at the fire department ASAP. You can send an email to sbarrett@southvillage.org, or you can call the station at seven zero eight seven five eight twenty-two twenty-five. Uh, we just want to make sure that all of our residents are safe because smoke alarms do save lives. Um, as we, uh, enter into this, uh, beautiful fall weather, we just want to make sure that you check your, uh, furnaces before you turn them on. Uh, during this time, we get, uh, abundance of CO alarms, um, and it comes from, uh, mainly from your furnaces. Uh, we ask that you just make sure that you, uh, check your, uh, filters, clean out your filters, change your filters, and make sure that they all are working properly before you turn on your, uh, furnaces, simply because, uh, by doing that, uh, not checking it, you can produce, uh, CO, uh, CO into your home, which we all know that CO is a silent killer. It has no smell, no taste, and you cannot see it. So just make sure that you check it and make sure that you're checking your CO detectors as well. Um, just as a reminder, again, that we are a, uh, warming center, uh, with all the weather and, uh, how the lights go out. If you need, uh, somewhere to go to charge your stuff, you can always come to the fire department located on, at the corner of two twenty-second street and Jeffrey. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, madam clerk, and the board of trustees. And as always, stay safe and God bless.
Okay, uh, those, those smoke detectors, that, is that why supply lasts?
Yes, why supplies last. As of right now, I, I've ordered a hundred of them. I have, uh, I've taken in possession of all a hundred, um, smoke detectors. We also are looking into, uh, getting into a program with CAP IMV to try to do this year-round instead of just this one here.
Thank you. Okay, uh, finance department director Renee Lewis.
Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to apologize to trustee Williams because I was not able to get back to her email for the last two weeks. The finance department, public works, and our engineer, Melanie Arnold, has been tied up during the twenty-twenty-two MFTI, so they have taken up all of our time. And also the accounts payable clerk is out until Thursday. So if you want to see Emily, she'll be back in Thursday. That concludes my report.
Um, public works director Dante James.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so we had recently three water main breaks, um, that we had to take care of. It's been a lot of water main breaks lately, and I'm pretty sure some of y'all out there realize that infrastructure's pretty old, so we just have to deal with those water main breaks as they come. We just ask for a little patience before, you know, because it takes time to get those things patched up and repaired, mostly for those who live on the south side of town. That's probably where most of the oldest water mains are. Well, ain't no question about it. That's where all the old water mains are, okay? Unfortunately, if you live over there, uh, there's been a lot of problems over there in the last couple of months. A lot of time on the south side. But, uh, no excuses. When they break, we're going to be out here, and we're going to get it done. Get that stuff fixed as quickly as possible, get your water back up and running. If it's too bad, we'll pass out some water. You know, if you see us out there working, you need some water or something like that, we got water. You know, fire department has been delivering water, public works and the water department delivers water. You know, I mean, it's not everything, but, you know, it's something that holds you over hopefully until we get those mains patched up. All right? So after that, uh, we've been working on well three. A lot of you are, I don't know if y'all know, well, three ain't ran in God knows how long, but, uh, we've been working on it, cleaned it. Uh, we should be able to get that one up and running for the first time in probably years. Just waiting on a few parts to have to be sent from, uh, like Canada and stuff like that. It's a supply chain issue, but we should be getting those in in a couple of weeks to get three up and running. Now, for your main pump house, the one that you guys drive past every day on South Trail, that one has issues as well. We'll fix it, okay? Uh, once we get three up and running, we're going to do the same thing we did to three to the main pump house. Ain't been done in a long time. All right? Uh, we also got on two hundred and nineteen place, those who live over there, and I appreciate y'all patience because we tore your block up. But you guys get new curbs and asphalt and all that, we just ask for a little patience. Those kind of projects don't happen in, you know, overnight. They're not completed like that, so, you know, there's stages to it and everything like that. But new curbs, uh, new driveway aprons, things like that. As V. A. Johnson mentioned, uh, we're, we're getting ready to roll out a, uh, sidewalk program, so, uh, and the ADA program. We've been doing ADA walk-ups and everything like that on the corners, uh, this summer. We kind of had to scale it back. Well, no, we stopped it, uh, period. Uh, just too many issues going on with that. Uh, other than that, what else I got? Oh, Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, so those of you who are on the internet, Instaface, whatever y'all call that stuff right there, y'all been seeing a lot of things about public works, people taking pictures, people fixing a tire. I seen that today. That young man was on his break, and I knew he was on his break, and I knew he had to change the tire to get himself home, so guess what? I had no problem with that. I also want to say, when there's people on the internet that. I also want to say, when there's people on the internet that want to go around and say that the guys in the Water Department or Public Works, or even Mr. James, that's me, don't know what the hell we doing. When your water, when the water main break on your block, who you think out there at two, three o'clock in the morning? Who out there? Public Works and the Water Department. So I'm begging y'all not to listen to some of these people who want to get on the internet and troll. I think that's what my kids told me. It's a word called troll. I don't even know who he is. But don't pay any attention to that stuff because guess what? Those guys work their butts off. Work their butts off for everybody in this room and everybody at home. All right? And it kind of offends me when people come after the employees of the Water Department and the Public Works Department as if they don't know what they doing. That's ridiculous. You're getting way more out of these guys now than you probably have in a long time. You see them out there on the streets, just stop and say hello to them. You know, don't be mean to them because they controlling the water. They trying to get your water done. They trying to make sure things are good throughout Salt Village. This is our mission, not to have people bash us and say that we ain't doing nothing. Mr. James don't know what he doing. Y'all about to get well three up and running again. Y'all ain't seen that in a long time, hey? Yeah. Ain't too bad if somebody don't know what he doing, huh? You know, so I'm asking, I know it's political, yeah, just leave my guys out of it. You can come at me all you want. But those guys that get up and come out here and do their job, I ask you just to ease up on them, you know, because they don't deserve it. You know, we out here. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay.
There's only grievances that haven't been answered in the Public Works Department about poll ups?
Not, not. If it is, I don't know.
You understand? Okay, would you like to ask just one of the grievances that Public Works Department is working on?
She said grievances in regards.
Have you heard of any grievances?
No, that's what I'm saying. Grievances in regards to.
Okay. There seems to be, can I not say anything? Can you direct to Mr. James?
Sure you're not.
Remind him that he was saying here.
I certainly will. But you stop taking pictures and saying bad stuff on the internet, Ms. Williams.
Mr. James, you see something on the internet with people like you?
Your mic's now. Your mic's now.
That's the problem. Everybody wants to dig everything.
They're not gonna be personal.
This is business. If you're not aware of the grievances that have been filed from the Public Works Department, there have been grievances, okay? For an example, the water main break that started on Sunday morning on my way to church at nine-thirty in the morning that ran until I came home from church at eight o'clock at night, that ran that entire day, and nobody came out to see about it. I did call the dispatch, and they said they have gotten calls, and they contacted Public Works. So my problem is, Mr. Mayor, why does it take all day and then people have to work through the night? And when somebody is called out, it's an outside firm. Now, there's this thing going back and forth. I don't know anything about it other than what I'm told, and people do talk to me.
Who talking to you?
Mr. James, I'm speaking, if you don't mind.
I'm gonna ask. I want you to answer that.
Okay, this is business.
Real business.
Okay.
Just a second.
Apparently, there's a problem.
Just a second.
Yes, sir.
Please. If it continues to be confrontational, I will stop it.
I'm not being confrontational.
If it continues to be, if you're making a statement, that's one thing. But if it's confrontational or you're accusing or... Is there something funny on there?
I don't think it's funny. I'm trying to, I'm trying to speak, and I'm being stopped.
If, yes, I did stop because if it becomes confrontational, I will stop it. But go ahead and finish your statement.
Please say who's not potential, okay? I have grievances in my hand. I have many grievances in my hand. And a lot of them have to do with the way and who and how these workers get called out, okay? Okay, well, apparently, they've been unanswered to the point where we've actually had the Labor Board contact us and tell us to cease and desist in not answering our grievances, which is going to, yes, you haven't seen that either?
No.
Well, I think your people.
We're talking personnel, sir?
Okay, well, then you should give it to the judge of ministers instead of holding them.
I'm not holding them.
He just said you got them.
The point of the matter is, he should have gotten them already, and he shouldn't get them from a trustee.
So we discussing business or we discussing personnel? I'm confused.
Mr. James, again, you're gonna cut me off again, Mr. James.
That's a question for you.
What I'm saying to the mayor is, if he doesn't know about the grievances, and he doesn't know about the letter from the Labor Board, maybe he should get on board and find out what it is because at some point, there's gonna be arbitration, and there's gonna be court action because of it. If you don't know anything about it, there is a problem in your chain.
Okay.
Don't pay no mind to that.
I appreciate that. We're gonna move on because.
It's not true. Not true.
I said exactly what you're coming back. We're gonna move on because I'm not, we're not gonna do this tonight.
It's not a lie.
We're not gonna do this tonight. You can give it, whatever you have, please give it to the village administrator. Thank you.
Mayor, I already have everything she has.
Perme?
I already have everything she has, so I have no clue what she's talking about.
Okay.
Have you signed it? I know you're not gonna talk.
Senior Advisory, senior advisory committee chairman, Mr. David Flom.
Yes, he did. He just called you out of the name.
He just called me. He just called you out of the name. Such disrespect.
He just called her out of her name.
Thank you, Mayor. We're the trustees, Madam Clerk, residents of the department head on report for this Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, from the executive board, for the executive board meeting from the senior advisory council. Briefing bingo is every first and third Friday from eleven AM to one PM in the senior center. Come enjoy, briefs and play bingo with us. Also, join our seniors for senior fit every Tuesday and Thursday from ten-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM. Come out and join our seniors ages fifteen up for a great exercise class. Contact Carol Coleman for more information. Time for game night from four PM to eight PM, and every second of fourth Friday, come out and join us for games such as Midwest, tobacco, dominoes, and more. Also, our annual sneakers ball is set for October twenty-sixth in the senior center from six to ten. Last year, we had a great time. A lot of residents showed and really had fun. Dress up and wear your favorite sneakers when you there, like a sneakers contest. And we do hand out prizes for that. Dance, eat, have fun. Eastern Stars, again, will be sponsoring our dinner again for this event. Also, our next committee meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty-four, at the senior center at five PM. All are welcome. Also, I want to say, Mr. James, thank you for what you did on my block. Yeah, you did a really great job and helped us tremendously. So thank you. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Board of Fire and Police Commission, Commissioner Chairman Francine Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, the police and fire commission report consists of that we still have tests of listing for one person on police and one person to fire, and we will be initiating some new tests from now forward to get this to either be those things coming.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals and Plan Commission Chairperson Charles Pym.
So we're going to just start, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, reports of standing committees and trustee comments, budget finance, I'm sorry, orders reviewed, trustee Alacoma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a committee meeting back in July, July twenty-ninth. I'd like to give a report as follows. This was a meeting where we had an ordinance brought before the committee, which was adopted by Joliet, and was presented to our committee in an attempt to settle disputes between the village and the Lincoln Lansing Drains District as to whose responsibility it is to maintain the care of the waterways of the village. We're still examining the issues. We're still looking at the facts. And as soon as we can, we will be presenting to the board, or to the board, a recommendation as to how to modify or if we can or should accept this ordinance that was adopted by Joliet. We want to fashion it so it will suit us, and once we put it all together, we'll be, at the same time, presenting it to the attorneys as well. And this concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Public Services, trustee Rayman Johnson.
Our next committee meeting for public service will be held Wednesday, the twenty-third, at five PM, right in the time exactly one o'clock.
Okay. I'm sorry, Housing and Governmental Relations, trustee Diane Sapp.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone who attended my event on Saturday. It was called Community Connections. It was called, that's a library, on Saturday from eleven o'clock till two. It was very informative, and it was also well attended. And this is an event that will occur monthly, the first week of each month, and I'm scheduled through December. For those of you who hear, there's a copy of mine, it's live on information places. And it'll be the same thing every month. We have guest speakers that come in and share information. This Saturday, we had, this past Saturday, we had speakers who talked about mental health. We talked about home-based businesses as well as managing finances. It was very good information that people received, and I think that this is something that has proven to be quite positive. I got very good feedback, and it's something that is requested that we continue. So this is something that we will do on a monthly basis. And flyers will be available. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Community Development, trustee Everly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really, really unfortunate that everything has to be so contentious while we're just trying to take care of business. I'm sorry. If I bring up things that are negative, it's because negative things are happening. I'm not gonna keep it quiet because as a trustee, that's not my job. I need to bring the things to public. For two committee meetings in a row, I've tried to have items placed on the agenda for the board to talk about, and the village administrator consistently takes them off. And that's why we call special meetings. We've been trying not to call as many special meetings because of the inconvenience. But if we can't discuss the things we need to discuss during regular committee meetings, we will have to call special meetings. Because we, as a board, and me speaking for myself personally, I cannot continue to authorize checks to be paid if I can't see the invoices. We've got to come up with a better system. We either have to send them through the, through the email, all the invoices every two weeks when we get ready to pay them, or we have to have a set time where whatever trustee is available can come in and view the invoices. Somebody needs to come in and view the invoices. We've got to stop paying bills that we cannot see. I wouldn't do it at my own house. I'm not gonna do it in yours because it's not fair to you that we pay bills without seeing them. And then we get bills from two years ago, and I could see how that happened. It slipped through the cracks. But we just paid bills from two thousand twenty-three during the last accounts payable. I don't think those slipped through the cracks. I think they just didn't get added on to the accounts payable. And then we get accused of not paying bills. We pay them when they hit the accounts payable. And if they don't hit the accounts payable for several weeks, months, or years, that's not the trustee's responsibility. But we haven't had an audit in four years. I'm gonna keep saying it. We haven't had a budget in two years, okay? Until we get a budget to actual, that shows that where we've spent the money in the last two years, I will not be attending a budget meeting. Although, I made it clear last Tuesday, I would not be in attendance this Tuesday because I had a funeral. But why would I go ahead and approve a budget after we haven't had a budget for two years? And I don't know where the taxpayers' money's gone for the last two years. I hope that you all will not see this as contentious, but that you will see this as business. What would you do if you were in my position? Would you just arbitrarily pay bills? Would you arbitrarily pass a budget? You haven't seen where the money's gone. Our budget runs about fourteen million a year. And if you're looking at the payroll, the payables lately, it's six hundred thousand, a million, seven hundred thousand. Fourteen million goes through pretty quickly in a twelve-month budget, okay? So we haven't seen where the last two years' money was spent. So I don't think that we're prepared to make a budget for the upcoming year until we see where our money has been. I also asked to see the EcoClean contract. On a number of occasions, I asked it to be on the agenda so we could see it. For some reason, I can't see the EcoClean. And I don't know who else does that for it. I know I have, and I can't see it. So I don't understand. I think we need to look at the payroll process, AP payroll process. We do have an ordinance that's already in place. I asked to bring that ordinance back so we could amend it and make it more transparent so the trustees have the opportunity to see the bills. That was taken off the committee meeting agenda. And if it means we have to start calling special meetings again, that's what we're gonna have to do. Because we do have a letter from the Labor Board that says the village is not responding to grievances. And for anybody who knows what happens when you don't respond to grievances, you're gonna go in arbitration. You're gonna be in court. And when I see you, I mean us, residents, will be in court because something, apparently, they have a right to complain. And we have a responsibility to respond. And when we don't respond, the Illinois Labor Relations Board gets involved. I'm just asking for an explanation. What are we not doing? I realize Public Works is doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate them. But are we following protocol? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Are we following protocol? That's all I'm asking. And if we're not, I'm telling you now, don't be surprised if we end up in arbitration. So in saying that, the cease and desist order was done on August thirtieth, and we've had more grievances since then. So we don't want that anymore. We just want to work and get our jobs done. Congratulations to School District one sixty-eight. I'm so happy for them. I know that's gonna be an awesome addition to our school, to our school district, and it will allow more children to come from outside the area. I'm very excited about that. I can't tell you how excited I am. Soft Talk articles up in Friday at five PM. And also, we have, the next blood drive is October twenty-sixth at the library from nine to two. I highly encourage anybody who can donate to donate. If you can't donate, please ask somebody to donate in your place. It's critical right now. Blood donations are critical. So I'm asking you, please, October twenty-sixth at the library from nine AM to two PM. If you can donate, please. And if you can't, please send someone. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Public Health and Safety, trustee Rita Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I stopped for a minute, and I watched and looked at everyone in this room. Everyone sitting out there that I know of, you are residents of this village. The upkeep of the water is your monies that pay for it. Cleanliness of this village is your money that pays for it. We, as residents, and I speak first as a resident of twenty-five, almost twenty-six years, these people that works here, being paid by your tax dollars, have the audacity not to live in your village and speak to us. And we're paying their salaries, and they're disrespecting you. This man sat here and told me, as a resident, that we pay his salary, that he don't answer our questions. And he don't give a about what we think, and you, we're paying his salary. He sat here and called this resident, Ms. Williams, a name that I cannot even repeat, and you are paying his salary. These people don't live in your village. They don't have to deal with what you have to deal with. They're not dealing with the monies that you're paying for water main breaks and for repairs or anything else. They live in very nice villages. They live in very nice villages and I doubt very seriously if they attend their own board meetings in the villages that they live in. But they come to our village and get your money and then disrespect you. So, the bottom line is, we are the residents of this village. And if we have questions about how our tax dollars are being dispersed, being spent, then we should expect and even demand that they answer our questions or go get a job somewhere else. We do not disrespect these people. We pay them. We do not call these people out of their names. We pay them. I have never disrespected, never one of these employees, but they consistently disrespect us all the time. And they think it's funny.
That's a lie. That is a lie.
So, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, it is time for us as, as residents of this village to demand better from the people that we are paying over a hundred thousand dollars for every two weeks a year. Re, demand respect and demand answers for how your village is being handled. Mr. Johnson is supposed to come before the board for consent and approval, but the mayor has not brought him before this board yet. So, technically, technically, he has not been approved to be the VA of this village. Because state statute says that he must come before this board for consent and approval before he can actually be recognized as the village administrator. And that's why he don't care. So, the bottom line is, if we ask about water main breaks, cause let me tell you, our village is actually broke.
No, we not.
So, we have one trustee that says she knows we not. I guess she's seen the bank, the bank statements cause the rest of us have not. And so, again, this trustee who's talking out of turn, she's wanting to run for trustee. And this is the behavior that she's giving us now because we're concerned citizens, but she wants to run for trustee. The bottom line is, we can't pay outside, we, this village has been here for, since nineteen fifty-seven. And for twenty-five years that I've been a resident, the twenty-five years that I've been a resident, our Public Works Department has always been the people who fix our water main breaks. For some reason, we have to keep calling out outside firms to fix water main breaks. What is going on that our war, our people are not fixing the breaks themselves? That is a legitimate question because it costs forty, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to call in outside companies. Because I see it on accounts payable. So, we can't pay our employees that's not doing the job and they have to pay outside people too. So, we need to understand what is going on. Why are our water main breaks running for ten hours at a time? I was told that our water tanks are actually getting low of water. Because the water main breaks are running ten, over ten hours at a time before someone even come to the site. Now, if that is not true, we have reports and we have grievances that is telling us this as trustees. So, we're going by what the people in the water department is telling us. We're not making it up. They're telling us what's going on and they are writing grievances for it. So, whatever anyone else is saying, deal with the grievances and the people in the water department that's letting us know what's going on in that department. So, again, this is our village. These are our tax dollars and we have a right to ask any question we want. Because if we don't, and things get worse, all of us gonna fall back on you. They gonna make you pay for it. They gonna make us pay for it. So, ask questions and demand that they respect or ask them to go somewhere else and get a job. So, my, my public health and safety committee will conduct their meeting, my meeting, the fourth, because we don't have a, a fifth, but the fourth Friday in October, the twenty-third. It will be held here in the rotunda at six PM. Now, we will be um, having applications for the residents, the children and the residents of the village from the eight, uh, from uh, elementary school through college. You can start filling out your applications now so you can prepare yourself because we disperse the scholarships every August. And as for any residents that's interested in academic scholarship, that I, my, my, my organization have available for the residents of Soft Village. So, if you want an application from school through college, you're welcome to attend the meeting to pick up one because scholarships are dispersed every August. Also, if you're interested in the six-week, twelve, uh, six-week training course, again, that my organization provides for the residents of the village of Soft Village, that will teach you how to start online businesses. You can also pick up an application so you'll know when that program starts as well. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Um, let me clarify a few things.
Thank you.
First of all, you're supposed to be giving reports on your community, not your business. This is not where you give reports on your business that you have going on. So, and then we're gonna continue to keep getting back and forth and yes, this election year, but you're gonna continue to bash and talk about what somebody, you're supposed to be giving reports. It's amazing how one instance, I'm a resident and then another time I'm trustee. But you're trustee, you was, you was elected to be trustee. So, you can't run away from that. Um, I, I, I was trying not to talk about it, but it's out there. The budget meeting that was held last week and was not attended by the trustees, that's their fiduciary responsibility. But then they claimed that there is no budget. We don't know where the money's at and all that kind of stuff. And there's no, there's nothing there that shows what we spent last year. On that, on that budget report that was, that was available at the, at the meeting, it would show what was spent last year and what is budgeted for this year. So, it was all spelled out, but if you're a king, cause no trustee, but one, only one trustee showed up. This is to call me. So, I understand that there was other things that were going on that was probably more important and other places. But some people didn't even think about saying, I'm gonna be there, or whatever the case may be. But you wanna sit here and say you don't have a budget. You wanna sit here and say there, there is no, we don't know where the money's at. We don't know where the, anything is going on, but you still wanna...
Mr. Mayor.
I'm talking. I'm talking.
Uh, but there's no budget. Do you have any copy of the budget, sir?
I didn't stop you.
All I'm just saying, before you get going, can we at least have a copy of the budgets in our mailboxes?
If you came to the meeting.
Can you put it in the mailbox? You can't put it in our mailbox.
You would've got your copy, but you chose not to. You chose to go.
So, now, we don't have a copy of steel. You had a meeting, but you don't have a copy of it.
I guess you did. I guess you did have a meeting.
You had a meeting, okay. Where's the copies? Do you have any copies of the budget?
You didn't bother to show up.
Oh, so you're not gonna display a copy of the budget?
You didn't bother to show up. Yeah, thank you. You didn't bother to go someplace else.
So, now, we don't, so now, we don't get a chance to see a budget because we didn't show up.
I didn't ask you nobody.
Which was things, he could've put it in our mailbox. He could've put it in our mailbox, but he didn't do it.
So, you wanna get up and walk out? That's what you're gonna do. That's what you're gonna do, walk out. You didn't care. No, you want, no, you wanna figure out what you wanna do. You gonna listen to what I have to say. You're going to listen. You gonna listen to what I have to say. Now, if you don't want to, you can get up and walk out too, like you asked me. The next thing I have to say is, you're probably listening. Sit down. Then leave, like you do. Go ahead. Vote for that. Bye. The next thing is that I wanted to say.
Um, the board has the right to make a motion to, to adjourn the meeting. The board has a right. The board has the right to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Two trustees have left. So, what'd you say? You, you can, you can do it every once, but you haven't seen your bill. I'm still talking. I'm still talking. I'm not that recognizing the motion. I didn't rec, but you were talking for twenty minutes. I didn't say anything. Are you going to? No, 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 no. Um, and also I have another comment about uh, the uh, burning of leaves.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to let everybody know that.
There's a motion to adjourn.
Who, who, you, you can't ask for a motion. No, you cannot. No. You're not running the meeting. You're not in charge of the meeting. No, you cannot. And your attorney tells you that he sees a lie. But now you wanna adjourn, but I have comments. You go, either you can get up and walk out. You can get up and walk out or you can sit here and listen. Okay, so now, the next, the next item I have is, and it was, I was told it was burning of leaves. By ordinance, you cannot burn leaves in your home. So, are you gonna be quiet? I'm not recognizing the motion. And um, the um, I will try to call another budget meeting um, this month, hopefully. That's what you're doing, but bye. Have a good one. Have a good one. No, no, you, you, but you should've came to the meeting. No, you should've came to the, you should've, you should've had that to me. It, it's gonna be a passed out of the meeting. So, why are you standing up? What does that mean? Why are you standing up? Bye, bye, goodbye, goodbye. So, now you understand. All right, you're gonna go to jail. Everybody that acts like they're darn fool in here, from this point on, it's going in here, comes to going to jail. Every last one of you. And that one of these guys, learn how to do this.
He's just lying and everything that comes out of his mouth, half the time it's a lie. That's why I don't wanna hear it anymore.
You was lying. We don't wanna hear your, sick of your lies. You started lying. Don't wanna say a man listen to you lying all of the time. You lied. You lied to get over here in the village. That's how you got here on the lie.